The meeting will now come to order. Good evening, everyone. Glad to see you all here for the first full regular board meeting we've had in several months in person. So we are ready to get started and we're going to begin with a roll call.
Mrs. Bowley? Mr. Munoz?
Present.
Dr. Bonebrake is present online. Mrs. Schmidt? Dr. Schumacher?
Here.
Mr. Tatum?
Here.
Dr. Beeson. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. And at this point, we are looking for a motion to go into executive session.
I move the Board of Education of USD 501 recessed into executive session for sixty minutes pursuant to the personnel exception of the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss confidential personnel matters to protect the privacy of the individuals discussed. The board will return to open session in the boardroom at six thirty one PM. The superintendent and executive staff are invited into executive session.
Thank you, Dr. Schumacher. Do we have a second for that motion? Mrs. Bowley, seconds. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, you've heard the motion. We'll vote on it.
All votes are in and the motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
First of all, can we give them another call? But Noel, board, some questions for you. We have some additional highlights as well. But let me first start with asking you to introduce yourself, what year you're in, and or how long you've been at Topeka Schools. Why don't we start with your favorite year?
I'm Ms. Jackson. This is my sixth year. Oh, thank you. I'm Kiana Jackson. This is my sixth year in Topeka Public Schools. My second year at Topeka West. I'm filling in on second violin today. And I have a really great group of premier orchestra students here playing a little snippet of our upcoming concert. And I'll let them introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Shelby Saunders. I'm a junior at Topeka West.
Hi, I'm Collette Kluk, and I'm a senior at Topeka West.
Hello, I'm Savan Covington, and I am a sophomore at Topeka West.
I'm Emma Shump. I'm a senior at Topeka West.
All right, yeah.
And this was in honor of School Board Appreciation Month. So they are playing to kind of reach you into today's board meeting. I do want to give you this certificate as well. Topeka Schools. Outstanding. For members, I think maybe the question is because you have all of this set up, you might want to take the picture after that just so that they don't have to take everything down and put it back up after the next.
Yeah, let's do that. Thank you all. This was for Board Appreciation Month. And the board absolutely appreciates what you guys have come and shared with us tonight in terms of your musical performance. I have a daughter who's a seventh I have a daughter who's a seventh grader at French, and she plays the viola. And so I get, the whole time I'm thinking, I wish she was here because she would be very inspired to see what you guys do, and maybe at some point she'll be able to perform in the capacity, same capacity that you guys are right now. So thank you again. Board members, questions, comments? Mrs. Bowley?
So what makes them a premier group?
Does one of you want to answer? Do you feel like me to answer?
Um, I feel like what makes us a premier group is the music is definitely a little more challenging. I joined as a freshman, and it was kind of scary. And I feel like definitely over the years, I've gotten to like the level that we're at. But also, like, everyone is just dedicated, and everyone, like, wants to be here. And so it's just more fun creating music when you know, like, everyone wants to be there.
I'd also like to ask, how many of you are on the honor roll this last semester? Raise your hands high, you should be proud. It shows the huge importance of music and orchestras in our district, that it really does help with education, thought process, building of the brain. And so every single one, I knew it. You guys were fabulous. It was so beautiful. I wish we'd heard more, but I'm sorry that we missed some of it. But we appreciate you coming out and honoring us tonight with your talent. And talent is the word. So thank you so much for bringing them tonight, and for all of you showing up. We appreciate that.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Yeah.
So I am being told that there's a problem with the audio. Oh, just for the music, but not for the conversation? Okay, perfect. Thanks so much. A very private performance. You had to be here. Yeah, that's right. That's right. Okay, all right, everyone. We are ready to move forward with our meeting's agenda. And so the next item on our agenda is an annual item. It is the, oh, the pledge. Okay, I'm getting ahead of myself. The Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have someone ready to do that, Dr. Anderson?
Ask these group of students here, but give it to Mrs. Johnson.
Got our senior of the month going to join me.
Yeah, go ahead. All right. If we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, now, that was the best pledge I've heard all year, as we start this 2025.
Okay, thank you so much for that. Board Officer nomination and election. And so nominations are open for President of the Board at this time. So I am looking for a motion to nominate the candidate of President, a candidate for President of the Board. Mrs. Schmidt?
I'd like to nominate Dr. Randall Schumacher for President.
Dr. Schumacher. All right. Do we have a second for that nomination? Mr. Mignoz, seconds? Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, we will go to a vote.
Dr. Bonebreak, did you want to vote? Yes?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
There was only one candidate, right?
Correct.
That is correct.
Let's make it unanimous.
All right, thank you.
All votes are in.
And the motion carries.
All right. Congratulations, Dr. Schumacher.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to hand this over to you.
So now I got to take over.
Well, actually, I think we'll just stay right where we are.
Yeah, give me that gavel.
Yeah, you're welcome to it.
She didn't even gavel in.
Give him contracts to.
Yes, I did.
Okay. So we next are looking for nomination for the Vice President of the Board. Mr. Tatum?
Mr. President, I nominate Mrs. Lisa Schmidt as Vice President of the Board.
I have Ms. Schmidt as a nomination. Is there a second?
Bonebreak, second.
And second from Dr. Beeson. Sorry, Dr. Bonebreak. Too late on the draw, so we'll move to a vote.
And the vote is open.
Aye, here.
Thank you. All votes are in, and the motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations. Okay, we will keep moving. So next is the adoption of the agenda, and so I need a motion for that.
I move the Board adopt the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
I got a second from Ms. Bowley, out of the corner of my eye. I forgot to look for it. So we will go to a vote if there's no further discussion.
Aye.
Dr. Bonebreak, I heard an aye. And all votes are in, and the motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you. So we get to move to school highlights.
This is the favorite part of the meeting. At this time, we're going to start with a video about one amazing student, and then Ms. Nicole Johnson will come on up and take it from there.
Hello, I'm Ty Castaneda, and I'm a senior at Hope Street Academy. My favorite part about Hope Street is definitely my connections with the teachers and my friendships. I don't really do well with bigger high schools, and so knowing that this is a smaller high school really helps me.
What's really unique about Ty is that he did not come in with any credits because he was homeschooled. So essentially, Ty has done four years of high school in three years and maintained a high GPA while doing all of that.
It's amazing. When he first came here, he had good skills, but he had no idea because he'd been homeschooled. He'd never been around other students. And once he got some confidence, he has just blossomed.
From him being a very quiet, shy, kind of introverted kid into turning himself into more of a leader that makes him a special kid here at Hope Street.
Well, you know, I had to force Ty to talk to me because he's pretty shy and keeps to himself. But once he did, he just opened up, and he's just a friendly young man, and he's got a wonderful personality, and he's got a great story, you know? He's overcome some challenges.
It's not his behavior or him talking that stands out, but it's his dependability. You can count on him. You know what you're going to get. He's going to be dependable about being here, about getting done what he needs to get done.
I want him to believe in himself as much as we believe in him. He's got limitless potential.
Just at being a smaller school, I think smaller classrooms helped me achieve what I need to do, and I do plan on doing the college at some point.
Ty is going to do so well, no matter what he decides to do or where he goes. He's going to have a real impact beyond Hope Street.
I'm just really, really proud of the man that he's become, and Hope Street allows that to happen.
You know, he came in with a good attitude, and he knew that he wanted to be in a school, but he knew that the big school wasn't going to be his fit. So he saw this as an opportunity to be supported and encouraged, and he was open to it.
After I graduate, I want to tell myself that I made it, and I'm proud of myself. It's definitely where I needed to be.
Hey, do I get to do introductions?
Yes, and well, I'll leave it to you to say a few things, and then Ty, I'm going to vent you with the certificate and leave it to the Hope Street family to continue this celebration.
Yeah, well, thank you so much for honoring Ty. We are super excited. He is not necessarily loving being the center of attention, but we all believe he deserves it, so we're going to do it anyway, and that's what I told him. He deserves it. So Ty Castaneda is a senior at Hope Street Academy. He's been with us since his sophomore year, when he joined us, and like we shared, he'd been homeschooled prior to joining us, and he's just been a standout, and he's leading in his senior class. He's been really a strong student, but a kind student. And people know that he is going to be kind and friendly and supportive. So he's a great kid, and we're super excited to have him here today, and his families come out to support him as well. So along with the Hope Street family, Ty's family's here too.
Mr. Ty Castaneda, can I give you a certificate? And it says, Topeka Public Schools recognizes you as the January Senior of the Month, the first senior of the month of the 2025 year. Congratulations, so we're proud of you. Hope Street family, we all stand, please. Don't come as a team. All right, I understand you're a little shy, so board members, entertain questions, if you will. But keep in mind, he was not the first to be talking to y'all for a long time.
Thank you, Ty. Thank you for coming up. As watching the video, I knew this would probably be a hard thing for you, and this board can talk, so.
They do.
I will entertain questions, though, from my colleagues, Dr. Beeson.
Hi, Ty. I will not make you answer any questions. I'm just going to make some comments. A few things have been said about you tonight that kind of highlight that you're just the kind of person that we're most proud of in the district, and I think that a couple of those are that it was said that you can always count on you, and that kindness is one of your top qualities. So obviously, you have a wonderful academic record, but I hope that you really internalize those compliments most of all. Congratulations.
I do, Ty, from the Hope Street family, for you, you sure, if you want to.
Thank you, Ty. Ms. Bowley and Ms. Schmidt really want to ask a question, so we'll let them. Go ahead, Ms. Bowley.
So it said that you were thinking of going to college? Have you given any more thought about where you might want to go and what you might want to study?
As of now, I'm thinking I'll just go to Washburn Tech, and I'm thinking maybe something along the lines of welding.
Nice, nice. That is an awesome occupation. So we wish you all the luck. And when you said you're going to be so proud of yourself when you graduate, you'll see this board, everybody do this. We will all be so proud of you as well. We'll be celebrating at the same time. I hope you'll walk so that we get to see that opportunity.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming tonight. It's such a pleasure to meet you.
You too. Ms. Schmidt? Yeah.
So I want to tell you congratulations. As you have experienced, Hope Street has kind of a special sauce about it. And so I know you mentioned in your video, you talked about the relationships, you know, that you get to have with your teachers. What piece of advice would you give kids that are maybe in the district struggling at their current high schools? What could you tell them about Hope Street? Or what would you want them to know about Hope Street that made a difference in your success?
That the teachers are honestly always there for you. No matter what, no matter what challenge you face, they're always there to guide you and help you. And I feel like that's what helped me. Anything else? Okay.
Ty, we normally take a photo with the board. Would you be so willing to do that?
Yeah.
All right. You sure you don't want to show the folks what they got you? Now?
Do you really want me to?
You're a kid. You save it till you get home.
Ready to go up, Ty?
And you want to grab your certificate? Hope Street family, y'all want to come on up as well?
Take a photo.
Yes. Thank you for that.
Doesn't matter.
Does.
Yes. Thank you. Allegiance back here, too.
We got everyone in the frame. All right, on three, one, two, three. There we go.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you in May, right? All right, we'll see you there.
All right.
Okay. Right. We have a video. Oh, and as our board members get seated, we're going to start the video for School Board Appreciation Month. We proclaim that's what this month is. Each of you have a gift in front of you from our students and our staff, so join me and enjoy the School Board Appreciation Month video.
Hello, so this month, we are celebrating School Board Recognition Month. We are so thankful for the incredible school board members that we have. So join us in looking at the various celebrations and the gratitude messages from schools across Topeka Public Schools. And for our school board members, thank you so much for all that you do to engage, prepare, and inspire students and staff for a lifetime of learning.
Happy School Board Recognition Month. On behalf of the Witzing community, our staff, students, and families, we thank you for your consistent support of our district. We appreciate your volunteerism and what you do day in and day out to support Topeka Public Schools.
I want to thank the Topeka Public Schools Board of Education for all that they do for our school community. We appreciate your time, your dedication, and your support.
I just want to reach out and thank the board for all they do for our staff, family, and students here at State Street. Thank you so much for all your good service.
Thank you to our Topeka Public School Board for everything that you do to support our students and students.
Thank you to our Topeka Public School Board for everything that you do to support our students and staff in the district. We appreciate you.
Thank you, school board.
Thanks for helping our school.
I'm thankful for our new reading books. They are interesting to read.
I am thankful that we have breakfast and lunch to eat each day. We appreciate you.
Hi, Topeka Public Schools Board of Education. From all the land of Lancer, I want to thank you for everything that you do to help support our students and staff in Topeka Public Schools.
Thank you, school board.
Thank you, school board.
Thank you, Topeka Public Schools Board of Education, for your dedication to our students and families and staff, as well as all of your hard work and everything you do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you for this safe school and great community.
Thank you for a safe school to learn and grow.
Thank you for letting me continue my passion for teaching.
You can't get a video better than that. Mr. Williams, you did a great job pulling that together. Thank you to our school board. You all are just amazing. The level of support, commitment, dedication, as Dr. Bonebreak joins from having all kind of challenging opportunities to overcome to be here. As you dedicate so much time, we can't thank you enough. So from our staff, students, to you, we appreciate you. And recognition continues. So this video goes live tomorrow morning along with us asking and sharing various highlights about you and your embarrassing moments. In some ways, we get a chance to take lots of photos of you and your kiddos. So we'll be posting those all month. But again, we thank you for your volunteerism and your support. I'll turn it back over to the board if there are any comments that you'd like to say to one another on this School Board Appreciation Month. But that does end our highlights. And unless anybody else on leadership team has anything else to share, we're going to turn it back over to the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I would say as the newly minted president, I am very thankful for my colleagues. And I think I speak for all of us, potentially even Dr. Bonebreak, that we all feel lucky to have a great group of people that we work with, both on the board, but also the everybody that supports us. From custodians to the teachers, to the staff, the administrative staff here. Up next on our agenda is public comments.
We have none, Mr. President.
And there are no public comments. So we will move to business by consent. And so I need a motion for business by consent.
I move the board approve the items of business by consent as presented and authorize the board president or superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
Is there a second? Mr. Tatum? Is there any further discussion or questions? If not, I'll move to a vote.
And the vote is open. Dr. Bonebreak? Dr. Bonebreak?
Yeah, aye, aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, I think up next is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. As Dr. Kip comes up to share the mid-year graduation report, one thing that we started during COVID that we kept was having a mid-year graduation. We wanted to allow students at that time to be able to leave the high school early if they chose to, start their lives and careers in the middle of COVID. And what we learned is that as we did that, graduation rates continued to climb, dropout rates declined. And it was really an opportunity to allow for students who were moving, students who needed to work, to get the chance to depart early. And so that mid-year graduation is quite the celebration. It is coming up on Monday. You have in front of you several documents. We use this senior salute. It's something I did in my old district that we do here. Because it gives you an opportunity to see the photo of every student. We've been doing this with our end-of-year graduation and now our mid-year. So as you peruse through those various senior salutes, the other information about each of these ceremonies at eight thirty, nine thirty, and five at West High and Highland Park are listed accordingly. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Kip to walk you through the mid-year graduation report.
Right. Good evening. Okay, let's go ahead and get started with the next slide, please. All right. So I wanted to kind of see where we stand. You know, it's always good to look back and see the growth that we've had. This year, we have a record number of mid-year graduates at one hundred and twenty-three. That seems to be a pretty steady growth from two thousand twenty-two. And we just continue to rise in that general trend line. Next slide. And breaking it down, school by school, you can kind of see Topeka West, you know, four years ago had quite a tremendous surge. You know, every year might be an anomaly, but you can see kind of some patterns. Topeka High holds steady at those numbers. And Highland Park has since then kind of jumped in their efforts to graduate at the mid-year point. And of course, Hope Street is always consistently graduating at mid-year. Their population's smaller, so that's kind of reflected here in the chart. And we always like to look at demographics, you know, as I presented before, there is usually a little gender gap of males versus females. It appears that females are graduating a little higher rate than males mid-year. At sixty-one percent of this year's graduates were female. And race, interestingly, that is, that pie chart for race is almost reflective of our district demographics. So it's it's pretty amazing how that aligned. Next slide. Just to summarize, this will be short and sweet. Thirteen percent increase since four years ago. Nineteen percent of this year's mid-year graduates had an IEP or were in special education. And eleven percent were English language learners, which is, like I said, very reflective of the district population. We have about a ten percent EL population. Eleven percent of those mid-year grads were EL. We have about a twenty percent special ed population and nineteen percent were graduating with IEPs. So Mr. Dick is here to answer any specific questions, but if there's anything that you need clarity on or me to elaborate on, I'd be more than happy to.
Is there questions for Dr. Kip? I, Dr. Kip, I have one and I'm, I think I know the answer, but when we look at postgraduate success that kind of the state tracks, does mid-year versus end-of-year graduation, does that change the numbers at all?
No, it basically, if they graduate, you know, it follows the same post-secondary track. So they'll monitor their first two years post-graduation, whether or not they were persistent in enrolling at a four-year or two-year college. So the same criteria that are used for a four-year graduate versus a three-and-a-half-year graduate, it's the same criteria.
Great. And Dr. Beeson?
Just a couple of quick questions. Do students have to like declare an intent to graduate at semester at any point in time?
That is a great question for Mr. Dick.
And as Mr. Dick answers that question, he may have a few other updates as well in terms of how we got to the numbers that we have, because it's an increase.
Yeah.
And so there's intentionality with making sure kids finish as they, you know, will call students and say, I just saw an email from them the other day to say, nope, this isn't acceptable. You will be graduating. You get up here today and tomorrow, we're going to do the rest. I mean, so it's this tremendous intentionality with that increase. So as you answer that question and share just in general, at least from Topeka High and what you know of the schools, things you do for mid-year graduation.
So they do. So we ask, there are probably, I would say we are, well, if you look at the kids that had the number of credits that could graduate right now, that would be a pretty significant portion of our senior class if they wanted to be done. Many of them participate in athletics and other things that keep them having to be enrolled in at least five classes in the spring semester. We have, I speak to Topeka High, I know these numbers. So there's thirty-three kids that are going to participate or have let us know they want to participate in mid-year commencement this year. We have sixty-two students of our seniors that have no courses this semester. They're done. They've completed all their requirements, but only thirty-three of those sixty-two want to do commencement now. The rest are going to stay and will do it in May. That number, that sixty-two without any courses, is a smaller number than normal. This time of year, we've really tried to push kids to keep them engaged at TCALC or Washburn Tech. And so we do have fewer kids that aren't taking any courses in the spring semester of their senior year because we're trying to keep them on track to something that leads to something in their future, a little bit more than that. So normally, I think over the last few years, we've been in the ninety to a hundred student range that don't return for any courses in the semester. This year, that's sixty-two and thirty-three of those sixty-two are participating.
Declare an intent of some type?
Yeah. So in the, as we get through, about halfway through the semester, the counselors do an individual meeting with each of those. A part of that meeting is talking about whether or not they want to be part of this. The same thing happens at the virtual school for those students that want to come back and participate. And that's kind of an ongoing process, kind of through the end of the semester, starts out with kind of a big number and we get down to a pretty consistent for us, normal, right around thirty, thirty-five kids that have an intent to want to do that.
Now, this is Bonebreak. Is there any difficult?
Yeah, go ahead, Dr. Bonebreak.
Is there any difficulty getting the appropriate classes to be graduated after three years?
That depends. The only thing kind of historically that has prevented that is we normally have not allowed students to take government before their senior year. We do have, we, so we're in a situation right now because of COVID, we are set up on a seven-period schedule and twenty-four credits to graduate. We extended that to an eight-period day for a couple of years to help coming out of COVID to make sure that students who fell behind or had some difficulties during COVID, that we could get them enough credits to graduate. But if you were a student throughout COVID and all that that had no struggles academically and you passed all of your classes and did well, you could theoretically achieve your twenty-four credits by the end of your junior year. We kind of hold government as a way to ensure that you return for a full schedule of the fall semester of your senior year. But in some cases, there's a process within the district to make an appeal to do that. And if it makes sense and everything, we have made some exceptions to that. The other thing that we try to do though is all of the programs and everything that we have available from Equity Lab, dual-credit courses that are available throughout the high schools, Washburn Tech, TCALC, all of those other things that we can connect you to that are usually free or at a much reduced rate while you're in high school. We try to keep you engaged in those things through your senior year as a way to get a head start on what it is you might want to do. And usually we're successful in that and keeping students enrolled and engaged for four years with us.
But you could take the government class your junior year.
If we were, if we made an exception for you to do that, yes, that could be possible.
Okay.
Yeah, but the standard is to take it.
Senior year.
Senior year.
Yep.
Ms. Bowley had a question, I believe.
So I'm thinking of our seniors that really don't need to be at the high school because they have their courses, except for their government that they have to come back for. There's a requirement of five credits in their last semester or last scene, last year, a required of five credits that they have to take to attend. You said something about five credits.
If you're going to play sports, you have to be enrolled in five credits.
You have to be enrolled in five credits.
To be eligible to participate in activities. And so if you're going to play basketball or wrestle or swim, dive, baseball, anything that happens in the second semester, you have to be enrolled in five classes in order to be eligible to participate in any athletic or activities like that.
And so do you have any concern about our balance of of scheduling? In other words, having seniors out there going, I'm not sure why I'm coming back. I just have to get one more credit. Should we have it more balanced where there's more credits that they need or classes they need to take in their senior year to make it feel like it's worthwhile? Do you, do you understand the question I'm saying?
Yeah, I think I understand. I don't think, I think right now, we're just in the situation because we had the couple of years where they could get eight credits. And for students who are pretty good academically and they don't fall behind, it was easy for them to achieve enough credits at that time. We are on a seven-period schedule this year and will be going forward. And so as we get through that a couple of years down the line, that won't be as significant of an issue as it is right now. We're just in the situation right now where those kids who are in particular, juniors, seniors, they've had the opportunity to accumulate a few more credits than everybody else was able to. And so, but a couple of years from now, that shouldn't be an issue anymore. It's, it's just, the opportunity was needed for kids through COVID who had struggled or we'd lost connection to. And so in order to maintain them and get through graduation, it seemed like the right thing to do for kids to try and make sure we could do that. It just also really benefited kids who were doing well academically that they could accelerate their learning for a while.
So it will feel more balanced going forward.
Yeah, we've probably got maybe one more year with seniors and then another one. It will be in pretty good shape there again.
You know, another concern I always have is that kids are leaving school too soon and not quite ready to take on that adult world.
Us too. And that's usually the conversation we have with them in that conversation. And it's, you know, we, we continue at TCALC, we continually try to expand and increase programs and opportunities for kids to be engaged in other things. We're really looking to expand our internships and the capability put out in the community and do things. And I think that will help. And that's usually the conversation we have with most students and families when it comes to that. These opportunities are here. Can we get you engaged to take advantage of some of these rather than leave us now? And most of the time, we're successful with that.
That's great to hear. Thank you for those efforts.
Mr. Munoz?
And just to add to that, you know, when we, when they stop coming because they have no more credits to take, they also lose opportunities to be able to connect, to be able to learn about FAFSA, about educational opportunities, employment opportunities, all the things that wrap around our service that we offer. So it really is, if we can keep them engaged, it benefits them.
Absolutely.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Dick.
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Kip.
Turn this back over to the board. Our first board meetings in January are a little, don't get used to the seven fifteen time, but they're a little bit shorter than most.
I'm going to take thirty minutes in my board member comments, so.
So, but that does conclude our report and we'll turn it back over to the board.
I think it is a board member comment. So I don't know if Dr. Bonebreak is still on.
Yeah, I'm.
Would you like to make a comment?
Well, a couple of things, like the health insurance committee met and we're still trying to get employees to see a practitioner. And the threat is to either pay them fifty dollars a month more or reduce their health insurance bill fifty dollars a month. In the finance committee, which you'll probably learn more about at the retreat, the city collects a property tax and they allocate a certain amount to the schools, but they don't distribute it. For example, I think it was like four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to renovate the Menninger Clock Tower. I'm not sure how that benefits the school districts of Shawnee County, but they don't individualize where these dollars are going. There's like thirty-some institutions that receive the property tax. They only list like four. And the school districts just don't get what they've been allocated. I think that they need to be more honest in their description of where the money goes. That's all I have.
Okay, I'm going to look to my right so I don't forget about Mr. Tatum.
Thank you, Mr. President. I couple of, well, I, we, there was a finance committee meeting. I was not able to join until late and only remotely. So I think I'm going to defer to either Dr. Bonebreak or Mrs. Bowley to expound upon the finance committee meeting since I, I believe they were there the entire time. since I, I believe they were there the entire time. But I was at the Topeka Public Schools Foundation meeting that happened on January seventh, and so I'm happy to report on that. There was some discussion about performance in the fourth quarter in terms of our investments. Our, the, the folks that, that we are tasking with managing our investment portfolio for the foundation are doing a great job of looking, looking down the road and anticipating changes to, to the stock market that could be occurring and, and making adjustments based upon what they think is going to be happening. So the end result of that is it really benefits the, the district and, and keeps, keeps our investments as solvent as possible. And, and we also talked about how despite the aggressive Fed policy that overall the U.S. economy seems to be pretty strong, led by robust customer spending, and how employment trends have got to, got to stabilize. Those things impact our, our investment yield rates. The S and P five hundred remains in an uptrend, and in, in twenty-twenty-five, there'll be focused shifts from monetary policy to fiscal policy, which is kind of a wonky thing that experts really kind of home in on, but it has to do a lot with trade and immigration reform. That will affect our money that's invested. But the good news is interest rates are back in an uptrend, so it was a really informative and positive meeting that we had, and so I've been sitting on that for a little while to share that with the rest of the board. The only other thing I was going to mention, just in terms of, of something that, that happened within the past couple of months that we haven't had a chance to talk about yet, several of our students were extended the opportunity to do what appears to be some kind of an internship or, or performance with the Herbie Hancock Institute of Jazz, and I think that is absolutely phenomenal. There'll be several staff that will participate, I'm sorry, several, well, faculty and staff members, I guess, will work with, with the, the selected students, but there'll be performances that will be put on concerts essentially in May, and this is a lifetime, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for these students. So I'm, I'm not certain who those students are exactly, but congratulations to them. Dr. Schumacher sounds like you've gotten more off.
Yeah, I think Mr. Reynolds is working on coordinating that, but I would agree, I don't know if we all got that, but I know Keith and I got it, the letter. And if you look at the Board of Directors, it's like Kareem Abdul-Jabbar. It's like some, it's a legit thing, so it's very exciting, and it was, I, I think there was some sort of application process that they went through to get it. So it is a big deal, but it's a little ways off and definitely more to come, but hopefully Mr. Reynolds can come back and.
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great. That, and that's all I have, Mr. President.
Great, thank you. Dr. Beeson.
It's been a while, so I'm hoping I can recall everything. As Dr. Bone Break said, we did have a Health Insurance Committee meeting, a lot of time spent sort of examining claims billed and paid versus premiums taken in and, and kind of where we're coming in with those numbers, looking at breakdown of health costs among those that we cover. We will have another meeting next month. We have not met with the Equity Team due to the holidays. We had a lot of snow days, and I just want to say thank you to those who had to make those decisions and also to families for being flexible. They were the right choice, and I was also desperate to send my children back to school. The legislature is back in session, and they, kind of top priority is to cut property taxes, which will impact us as a school district, of course, so I know we'll be watching that. I think last thing is good luck to our basketball teams in the Topeka Invitational this weekend.
Thank you. Ms. Bowley.
Since our last meeting, we've had a head start meeting. They have had almost full participation in their dental clinic, which is really kind of like the first time they've had so many participants there, and so they're very grateful for that. They are working very hard and having family information nights to help families understand the importance particularly of attendance and how much school can be lost in a very short time. They had such wonderful outreach from the community for Christmas or holidays or winter coats or gloves. Every student in the building got a gift from a Mr. Michael out of Kansas City. He also was gracious enough to gift other buildings as well, but they were just, you know, really felt loved by so many people, and so did the students. Their attendance is, was pretty good coming back from the holidays, but they're anticipating the attendance to go down because of all of the viruses that are out there, Dr. Schumacher, as you well know, and attendance is very important. Their grant, last year's grant, they have the allocated money that they're spending down and starting on their new grant at this time. Finance Committee, our final enrollment was eleven thousand six hundred and eighty-four students. Of course, you can see what kind of budget that will be for us, what, that will be explained, more of it will be explained at our retreat, and so I won't go in too deeply about the budget, but one of the things you will probably hear is that the mental health grant money may be reduced, so many of us really support more mental health in our school buildings, but it may be a tough decision for us as a board, as grants monies may be becoming smaller. Our state contribution, one-time contribution for special ed was for last year, and legislators only voted it for the one year, so we're hoping that we see that again, but it was very helpful for our general budget. And pretty soon, our audit company will be here to, you know, have a very fun meeting with us about our audit. It's getting close to being completed, so we will get to listen to them about our audit, but it is coming out really well. I wanted to say thank you to all of our service center and our custodial workers for the snow days that we had and the cleaning up of the area for students to get into our buildings. They just, it was very heavy lifting for everybody to take care of that, and I'm very appreciative of them. We had so many teachers, staff members celebrated that I didn't even write them all down, that were awarded like national and state awards for excellence. Mr. McGrady got the Northeast Kansas Orchestra Director of the Year. I mean, there were just so many, so I just appreciate the quality of staff that we have, and I just want to thank each and every one of them coming and being that excellent staff member for our students. Martin Luther King Celebration was this last weekend, and we had so many students throughout the whole activities of Martin Luther King Celebration. All kinds of scholarships were given to our students, from artwork to poetry to essays to just being awarded as money at the dinner. They have just blessed our district and our students in so many ways, so I want to give a public thank you to them, and it has just been amazing. We also had a tech meeting, but it was so long ago now, and there's so much that's happened since, that I don't remember anything that, that I need to tell them. So we meet on Monday, so that's in my old notebook that I lost. But our tech department is doing really well under the leadership of Mr. Reiner, and we thank you for that, and great plans are being made for the future of our technology in our district, so that I do remember. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Schmidt.
Dr. Bone Break touched on our Health Committee. Ms. Bowley touched on the Technology Committee. Policy Committee is meeting on Monday as well, along with Technology Committee. I think we're going to start talking about technology policies in policy, so that'll be fun. I want to thank past President Tatum for your service the past year, and to you, Dr. Schumacher, in your role as Vice President, you guys did a wonderful job leading us. I know it takes a lot of extra time and effort that is all behind the scenes, but we appreciate your leadership. I want to thank the district and parents for their cooperation and flexibility with the snow days that we had. You know, in a perfect world, we could control all things, but we can't, and it is a fine balance of what we can control versus what we can't. When the district is making decisions about whether we hold school or not, you know, I can vouch to my street, which is a bus route street, and there would have been no way that the buses would have gotten up and down that street. It was, we just need to remember, it was record snow, they're largest, the city's tracked in history. Events like this always lead to an opportunity to do like after-action reports, to see what we could have done better or differently, but I appreciate everybody's flexibility. I know everybody was bated breath, and by the end of the week, I think they were all just begging for us to have school again, but the world just wasn't ready yet. I also want to wish good luck to those teams playing in the Topeka Invitational Tournament. Attorneys were always exciting times when we were in school, so good luck to our Topeka Public School participants, and I think that's all I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Munoz.
I'll be brief. As was mentioned before, we're going to have a Policy Committee coming up soon on Monday. Look forward to that, as well as Equity Council, which will be meeting here shortly. In the Consent Agenda, there were a couple of donations I wanted to just sort of, sort of chime in and make sure, recognize, Topeka Bible Church, Advisors Excel, Charlie's Car Wash, who recognized Ms. Vannett from Chase, who I know does a lot with students there, Zero Credit Union, and a couple of our retired staff who made a significant contribution to Topeka High School, so Activity Fund. So thank you to our staff who give so much during their time with Topeka Public Schools, and it seems even after, they're still giving, so that's a selfless individual, so thank you all. And yeah, I, I think we all, as, as parents with kids, recognize that the severity of the weather, things are outside of our control, but I think what, what we definitely want to sort of make sure individuals understand is that safety is our top concern. It's first and foremost, as, as when parents entrust their students to us, we take that very seriously, and so that was guiding for us when it comes to those decisions, whether we have school or not. I did get a lot of sledding in, so, and other than that, though, look forward to having our, our students back in the class. I did attend a recognition, students at Highland Park, and making, so for those, and I'm sure there are more, and in addition, I think we didn't mention it, but we have a couple of mid-year graduations that I hope to see all of my colleagues, both at Topeka High, Topeka West, and Highland Park. I'm sorry. And our letters, yeah, exactly. I have a, we all received letters from students and staff, and so I know I sent my, a couple of emails from individuals, making sure that they know that we received it, we appreciate it, and, and, and we do this because we love supporting our students and staff and teachers, so that's it.
Thank you. I, one of my duties initially will be to follow up on who's going to what committee and make sure people are comfortable with where they're at and make sure. So I'm, I'm on a Keith. So I will get that list from Ms. Lister, and then I will reach out to each of you and work on that. We had personnel today. We are starting to look towards the next school year, as far as like retirements, that kind of stuff coming up, and starting to look at filling those upcoming slots. We have Technology Committee next week. We have the retreat Saturday morning. I, I don't know if it's the weather or the, like, the snow or the temperature or the legislature being back in session, but things feel kind of dark, kind of dark sometimes, and walking in from executive session to the beautiful sounds of that orchestra, Ms. Jackson, having heard them before, that same group, but different groups of kids, I'm always impressed, just knowing that the initial strings, like, the curve's pretty high when you have a beginner string. It can sound pretty horrible initially, and for it to sound so beautiful is really fantastic. And so, so having seen those bright spots and being able to find those bright spots when it feels pretty dark outside and inside maybe too, is great, so I appreciate that, and I think that is it for tonight, so I just need a motion to adjourn.
I move the meeting adjourned.
And a second. Dr. Beeson. And then we raise our hands. Meeting adjourned. Oh, there we go.